Everyone, I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is the meeting of the Omaha Planning Board. The Planning Board members that are here today are Jeff Moore, David Rosacker, Chris Rupert, Jorge Sotolongo, Matt Tondal, Patrick Morris, Vice Chair, and I, Michael Paye, Chairman. Members of the city staff that are in attendance today are Dave Vanslaw, Planning Director, Eric England, Assistant Planning Director, Mike Carter, current Planning Manager, Jennifer Taylor of the City Law Department, and Kathy Epperson, Recording Secretary. Our rules of procedure are as follows. Notice of this hearing has been published. Copies of today's agenda are located in the table right here in front of us. You're certainly welcome to come down and pick one up. The cases on the consent agenda will be heard first. Consent cases have been recommended for layover, have already been heard, or are perceived by the Planning Board to be non-controversial. Therefore, they will be read and voted on without the opportunity for you to state your opinion on that case. If you wish to have the case discussed during the hearing, you may remove this case from the consent agenda. To do so, when each consent case is read, I will ask if anyone wants the case removed for discussion. If you do, please stand up and say so, and the case will be removed. This case then will be heard after we vote on the cases that remained on consent. When the case is heard, you will have the opportunity to come to the podium, clearly state your name and address, and give your testimony at that time. When hearing cases on the regular agenda, the Board will first hear from the applicant, and after the applicant states their case, we will hear from the proponents, and then we will hear from the opponents. After both sides are heard, the public hearing will be closed, and no additional testimony will be permitted unless a Board member requests additional information. When at the podium, please clearly state your name, address, and whom you are representing for the record. Your testimony is very important to us. In the interest of time and courtesy to others, please be short and to the point. We will try to limit each case to 10 minutes. Those directly involved in the case, please speak first. We request that large groups select a spokesperson to represent that group, therefore eliminating repetitive testimony. When given testimony, please provide new information and try not to repeat what has previously been said. We do ask that all speakers and others be treated with courtesy and with respect. In that regard, please remain silent while seated, and please turn off your cell phones. Our decision to approve, deny, or continue a case made here today will be forwarded to the City Council for another public hearing and final disposition by the City Council. Conditional use permits are an exception to this rule. The Board's decision made here today on conditional use permits are final and not forwarded to City Council. Lastly, upon the advice of Law Department, all communications to the Board members from attorneys or other interested parties should be transmitted through the Planning Department so that they are made part of the public record. The Department will then transmit all the information to the Board as well as the rest to the rest of the public. A current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act can be found in the white binder in this room. There are no changes to the agenda today, so we'll go ahead and move forward with the consent items that are on for approval first and then for layover. So first item is case number seven. Case C-1105178C807286. The applicant is Brookstone Metals, Inc., Better Senior Living. It's on consent for approval. The request is approval of a major amendment to the special use permit to allow general office in the R7 district, along with approval of a major amendment to the PUD, Planned Unit Development Overlay District. This was laid over from our June 4, 2025, meeting. Location is northeast of 204th and Harney Streets. Does anyone wish to have this item removed? Next is item eight, KC-325165. Applicant is a Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha on consent for approval. The request is approval of disposition of city-owned property. The locations are 1125, 1121, 1115, 1111, North 18th Street, and 1726 Nicholas Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Next is item 17, KC-1225180. Applicant is Robert Teelin. I hope I pronounced that right. It's on consent for approval. The request is preliminary and final plat approval of PSP acres and minor plat outside city limits. Property is located within ED, Environmental Overlay District. The location is southwest, southeast of 108th Street and Pawnee Road. It's parcel number 0138060010. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, next is item 20, KC-1098129. The applicant is Nebraska Dentistry and Oral Surgery for Animals. On consent for approval, the request is approval of a major amendment to the major development agreement for I-80 Business Park. The location is 5805 South 118th Circle. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Next is item 22, KC-725171. Address for the applicant is 13918 Gold Circle LLC. On consent for approval, the request is for approval of a conditional use permit to allow personal services in the GO district. The location is 13918 and 13912 Gold Circle. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Next is item 23, KC-725173. Applicant is Melvin Sudvik Homes. On consent for approval, the request is approval of a conditional use permit to allow an accessory dwelling unit in the DR district. Location is 22303 Edgewater Road. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Next is item C-708022. Applicant is Millard Public Schools. On consent for approval, the request is approval of a major amendment to the conditional use permit to allow secondary educational facilities in the R4 district. Location is southwest of George B. Lake Parkway and West Q Road. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Next is item 25, KC-1425167. Applicant is Planning Board. On consent for approval, the request is approval of the vacation of a portion of Manderson Street right-of-way abutting to 7335 Manderson Street, approximately 377 feet west of Clifton Drive. Location is west of Clifton Drive and Manderson Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Next is item 26, KC-1425168. Applicant is Planning Board. On consent for approval, the request is approval of the vacation of a portion of 69th Street right-of-way abutting lots 12 and 13. Maylander Place and Lot 2, MH Landing Replat 2. Location is north of 69th and Grover Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Next is item 27, KC-1425169. Applicant is the property owner. It's on consent for approval. The request is approval of the vacation of a portion of Military Avenue right-of-way adjoining Lot 11, Block 2, Saunders &amp; Heimbaugh Addition to Walnut Hill. The location is northwest of Hamilton Street and Military Avenue. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Next is item 28, KC-1425170. The applicant is property owner. It's on consent for approval. The request is approval of the vacation of a portion of Arbor Street right-of-way abutting lots 1, 2, and 3, Block 4, Phillips Addition, and also abutting Lot 1, Block 3, Phillips Addition, and part of Lot 1, Block 2, McIntosh subdivision. Location is west of 9th and Arbor Street. Does anyone wish to have this one removed? Okay, those are all our cases on consent. I'll now read the cases that are on consent for layover as well. And again, if this is one of the cases that you'd like to hear or have testimony on, please raise your hand, and it will be heard. The first is item number four, KC-1225108. Applicant is DNE LLC. It is on consent for layover. Request is preliminary plat approval of Walnut Hill Replat 10, a subdivision inside city limits with approval of a waiver to Section 5384A. Lot depth, this was laid over from our May 7, 2025, meeting. Location is 1116 and 1120 North 40th Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, that's been asked to be removed, so this will be heard after we get done with the voting on the consent items. So, okay, and that relates to item six as well, so we'll pull that one as well. So that'll be heard in the regular meeting. Next is item number nine, KC-325182. Applicant is Don Winnett. It's on consent for layover. The request is approval of an amendment to the future land use element of the city's master plan from low-density residential, industrial, and open space to industrial and open space. The location is 2205 North 88th Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? All right, next is item 18, KC-1025181. The applicant is Don Winnett. It's on consent for layover as well. Request is rezoning from R2 and GI to GI. The location is 2205 North 88th Street. Does anyone wish to have this one removed? Next is item 21, KC-825172. Applicant is Latony Wright. On consent for layover, the request is approval, excuse me, approval of a special use permit to allow transitional living in the R7 district. The location is 1905 Spencer Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? And that's all our cases that are on for layover as well. So at this time, I will entertain a motion for those cases that were on consent for approval.
Motion to approve Agenda Items Number 7, 8, 17, 20, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, and 28.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Kathy, would you please record the vote?
Morris?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Tondal?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero?
Thank you. Next, I'll entertain a motion for those remaining cases that are on consent for layover.
Motion for layover, case 4, 6, 9.
Nope.
Yep.
18, 21.
Second.
9, 18, and 21. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Tondal?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero?
Okay, thank you. All right. If you were here for one of those cases, those have been completed. You're certainly free to stay, but you're also free to leave if you'd like. So we'll move now into the regular part of the meeting here, and the first, we'll hear the case that was pulled off, the cases that were pulled off consent. First one is item four, KC-1225108. The applicant is DNE LLC. It was on consent for layover. The request is preliminary plat approval of Walnut Hill Replat 10, a subdivision inside city limits with approval of a waiver to Section 5384A. And the lot depth laid over from our May 7, 25, meeting. Location is 1116 and 1120 North 40th Street. Okay, we hear from the applicant, please.
Good afternoon, members of Planning Board. Chairman, my name is Scott Los. I'm with TD2 Engineering and Surveying, 10836 Old Mill Road, on behalf, here on behalf of DNL LLC, DNE LLC, excuse me. This project is an affordable housing project with five proposed tiny houses, as we call them, at the address noted above. We were laid over in May, based on some information the Planning Department wanted to see. We resubmitted in June for this meeting, and just found out yesterday we're going to be recommended for layover again because we lacked some information on storm water management. This morning, I tried to reach out to the Public Works Department. I sent them a drainage study which indicates that our project will work. We've set aside an outlot on the project for a water quality, storm water management basin. Everything works by the numbers. We have plenty of capacity. So despite the recommendation from layover, I'm pleading to the Board here to allow us to move forward. We've got everything all ducks in a row. It's a matter of working out details now with the Planning Department. So I'm asking for you to consider that, and I've talked to PJ Butler in the Planning Department. I've talked to Mike on occasion, but I've left a message with, I've talked to Ryan Hozis from where I've left a message with Brian Lotus and Public Works when I sent this today. But that is the only thing that was mentioned to lay us over. I provided that. I'm asking for us to move forward so we don't lose another month on this project.
Is there a reason you didn't provide that earlier than today?
We provided a minimal drainage study. They wanted more information. It's a little bit nebulous, little bit in the code. Some projects, they want a lot, some projects not as much. I know there's projects on the agenda that move forward with not as much, and some that move forward with more. So that's why, just didn't understand. And it's always a little frustrating when you don't hear back until the day before that, okay, you're missing something. So I'm asking for some leniency here to move forward. We've done a bunch of these projects. We know how to do them. We know how to get the approvals we need from Planning and Public Works to make these go forward. I'm simply asking for approval to move forward with the preliminary plat today. We still have to do all the other steps to get the final plat in City Council, so.
Very good.
Be happy to answer any questions I can.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents that wish to speak on this? Are there any opponents that wish to speak on this case? See, and none, I'll close the public hearing. Eric?
Yeah, so we have a plat, and then Agenda Item Number Six is a PUR. There were a few comments within the PUR component, but the primary reason is for post-construction storm water plan, information that Scott had mentioned. Our recommendation for layover remains the same to us. There's, I haven't heard, first off, from Public Works whether what has been submitted is acceptable, and, you know, taking information in late and trying to go on the fly and change recommendations, you know, it's, staff just doesn't have the ability with all the different cases, all the different projects that we have ongoing. So, you know, unfortunately, you know, another month is what we would see as necessary, and hopefully all the information is correct, and we can, you know, sit here next month and recommend approval. But staff is not comfortable, and I have not heard from Public Works whether the information submitted is even what they need. So I would say our recommendation reports went out last Friday, so, you know, we do have an app with all the information, and we do email the applicant, so, you know, I'm sorry that wasn't received. We do have a tight schedule each month, so unfortunately, there's not a lot of time from when the reports get finalized to when they go out to the applicant. So if you have any further questions but for Agenda Item Four, staff would recommend layover.
I assume with what he's asking or presenting, you can review that fairly quickly and turn around so it'll be available for next month's meeting?
Planning Department staff, which of course I'm part of, we do not do the reviews for the post-construction storm water. I don't know how long that would take. It's not necessarily a quick review. Sometimes those do take time, so I just don't know. I can't speak for that. You know, I don't believe, you know, Ryan Haas, he's in attendance, but he's a traffic engineer, so it's a bit out of his purview as well.
Fair enough. Thanks. Okay, do I have a motion?
Motion to layover.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Tondal?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero?
And on item six?
For Agenda Item Six, staff does make a few recommendations. I think a, you know, quick conversation with the applicant could be beneficial. There's a few items with the driveways and the access that we feel could be better accomplished, but, you know, with that being said, staff recommends layover of Agenda Item Six.
Okay. Questions? Do not entertain a motion?
Motion. Second.
Motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Tondal?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero?
Thank you. Okay. Next, we'll move into the administrative meeting part of our agenda. These are items that will not have public testimony available. At this time, there's only three items on here. First one is item one, KC-1022269. C-1222270. The applicant is 156 Potter Villas LLC. The request is final plat approval of Pine Creek Woods, formerly the Villas at Pine Creek Woods, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG and R5 to R4 and R5, along with approval of the MCC Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District for a portion of the site. This was laid over from our June 4, 2025, meeting. The location is southwest of 156th and Potter Streets. Eric, please.
Yeah, so this final plat, as mentioned by Chairman, was laid over last month. There were two main items for that layover that Public Works needed additional information on and did receive, one of those being enlarging Outlot B on the western portion of the site. So that has now been included to side slopes and a maintenance path within that outlot, as well as the storm sewer extension between or within lots 16 and 17 has been extended further to the north into Outlot A. So with that being said, staff recommends approval of the MTC overlay for Lot 22, approval of the rezoning from AG and R5 to R4 and R6, approval of the final plat subject to providing building envelopes on the final plat milars for Lot 16 and 17, and submittal of an acceptable subdivision agreement prior to City Council.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the MCC Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District for a portion of the site, approval of the rezoning from AG and R5 to R4 and R6, and approval of the final plat subject to providing building envelopes on the final plat milars for Lot 16 and 17, and submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to City Council.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Tondal?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero?
Thank you. Next is item two, KC-1024097. C-1224098. Applicant is Bennington Public Schools. The request is final plat approval of Military I-180 crossing Lot 1 and Outlot A, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to R4. The location is northeast of 180th Street and Military Road. Eric?
Yeah, so this final plat is for a future Bennington School District High School. Took a little time to get to this point, but here we are. So this final plat creates one lot and one outlot, which is in conformance with the previously approved preliminary plat. There are a few tweaks on the documentation that will need to be updated related to street names on the final plat milars, as well as modification of a North Arrow in your typical subdivision agreement. So staff recommends approval of the rezoning from AG to R4, and approval of the final plat subject to addressing the three conditions in the recommendation report prior to forwarding to City Council.
Thank you. Any questions? If not, entertain a motion, please.
Motion to approve the rezoning from AG to R4, approval of the final plat subject to addressing the three conditions in the staff report prior to forwarding to City Council.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Moore?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Tondal?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero?
Thank you. Next is item three, KC-1025143. C-1225144. The applicant is Brookstone Metals, Inc., Better Senior Living. The request is final plat approval. It's Peace Ridge Replat 1, a subdivision inside city limits with rezoning from R4 and R7 to R4 and R7. A portion of property is located within the PUD Planned Unit Development Overlay District. The location is northeast of 204th and Harney Streets. Eric, please.
Yeah, so this final plat is accompanied by an earlier Agenda Item that was approved on the consent agenda. That was a major amendment to the existing special use permit in PUD Overlay District. This is a simple plating matter that creates four lots, three of which will be future single-family residential homes, and the fourth lot, which is the office expansion that the major amendment was for. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from R4 and R7 to R4 and R7, and approval of the final plat subject to submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to City Council.
Thank you. Okay, any questions? If not, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve rezoning from R4 and R7 to R4 and R7. Approval of the final plat subject to submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding to the rest of the board.
I have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Rupert?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Tondal?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero?
Okay, thank you. Okay, well now move into our held-over cases. First one is item five. Before I begin on this, I know there's a lot of interest in this, in this particular project. I'm going to ask the audience that are here participating in this hearing, if you're going to, if you're going to speak on this item, please come forward so we have some idea who's going to speak to this. And I'm going to try and control the amount of time that's used. If your testimony's already been heard, please don't repeat what's already been testified on, okay? And for the audience that are here, just to hear what's going on, I'm going to control the meeting, no outbursts of any kind. Please be professional in your demeanor, and we'll get through this, okay? So the item is item five, KC-725068. The applicant is Laura Tarpinian. The approval, the request is approval of a conditional use permit to allow multiple family residential in the CC district, and this is laid over from our May 7, 2025, meeting. The location is southwest of 243rd and Chicago Streets. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board members. Jim Bouger of Panzing Hogan Law Firm, 10250 Regency Circle. Here on behalf of the applicant, I also have with me today Jerry Reimer, who's with the developer, Larry Smith of Avon Architects. In one of his capacities is the architect for the project. Caleb Schneider is also here from Lamprey Neerson Associates. We're going to have some discussion about the sanitary sewer on the project, and Caleb's here on that behalf. So as the Board members are aware, this application for the conditional use permit was, is here today after being laid over at the April meeting with a request that the applicant and the HOA and other representatives of West Shores get together and see if we could find some common ground in moving forward with some development plan that might be more palatable to the neighbors. There was a lot of discussion at the last meeting, and there's a lot of opposition from a lot of the folks out at West Shores as to this project, it being a multifamily project. So following that meeting, we had several in-person meetings with HOA representatives, with their council. We also met with SID representatives. We also met with SID representatives, their engineers, their council, to try and work through as many issues as we could, hopefully come to, to some type of plan that would be more palatable to, to the residents out there. One of the, one of the major, I guess, events in this, in this process, sort of at the conclusion of all of these discussions, there were three different projects that were, were potentially thrown into the, into the loop as potentials for the, for the development that were modifications from what was before the board the last time. The first was a, was a reduced 90-unit apartment project. The second was a, basically an apartment project on one of the lots and a condominium project on the other lot. And the third was a condominium project that would, would occur on both lots. The, the, sort of the trick or the, the hard part of the condominium element is that in order to develop condominiums, the ownership of those probably $1 million-plus condominium units would need to have some access to the lake. So at present, the declaration of covenants for the West Shores subdivision does not encompass the commercial lots. So there would need to be an amendment to those covenants that would permit not only participation in the association, but also allowing lake access, because these commercial lots do not have lake access. Only the residential lots have lake access. So the HOA board took this, those three proposals to the residents with, for consideration to see if any of those could be supported. And if those could be supported, we would have moved forward with one of those projects. However, we learned following that meeting and a vote, they took a polling of the residents that none of those projects were supportable by the residents. So we're here before you today with a compromised plan, or we think it's a better plan. We think it's a, you know, we did listen to their comments, and we did make some changes to the overall site plan. That included a reduction of the apartment units from 124 to 106, which is about 15% reduction. The building coverage, the apartment building coverage on the lots is reduced by about 40% from 62% of the lot to 36%. The building on Lot 1, Replat 3, which is the west lot, which is immediately adjacent to a single-family residence, we flipped the building. So in the prior plan, the building was about 30 feet from the property line, which was, and under the new plan, it's about 140 feet. So there's 110 feet difference between the prior plan and today's plan. The totally impervious coverage, which is the paving plus the buildings, was reduced from 55 to 44%, and the green space on the lot was increased from 45 to 54%. One of the comments at the last meeting was there were some boat slips that were shown on our plan, which were basically to allow people that did have access to the lake to come up to the apartment project at the request of the HOA, that we've eliminated that from the site plan as well. So there were a few other, I guess, discussions on other things that we could maybe find some common ground on. There was, you know, a significant concern that was expressed at the last meeting about potentially having residents jump in the lake, or try and swim, or otherwise use the lake. There's a liability concern of the HOA, which we understand. And following that meeting, and, you know, we will stand by our word on this, that we will take actions to try and prevent that from happening. We will have rules and regulations within the lease and the rules and regulations that are under the lease, so that, that prohibit access to the lake, and if there's a violation, it will be deemed a breach of the lease. There may be penalties. We haven't worked all the details out on that. We'll also put signage up along the lake, so that hopefully the residents that are living there, who I think will be respectful for, of that, that there will be no lake access. So that will be made very clear at the time that they lease their premises. We also, you know, indicated that as we move forward with our project, we will continue to work with the HOA to, if there are other items that we could come to some agreement on that would be beneficial to the residents of West Shores and can be accommodated by Jerry and his team, we will continue to do that as we move forward. And one of the things that we, I think that both sides agree is maybe important or would be beneficial is to have this an integrated community, meaning that the residents of the apartments and, and the single-family unitholders all feel that this is part of a community. And if there's an ability for the apartment unit owners to participate in functions at the lake, and there's, could be some dues contributions or other contributions for them to do that, or if we have amenities on the apartment lot that could be beneficial to the single-family residents, we will, you know, try and work together to see if there's some solutions that we can, to hopefully work together as we move forward. So one of the other major issues in, that was discussed at the last meeting was relating to the sanitary sewer capacity. So I think everybody has acknowledged on the West Shores, the SID, the HOA, and our team have all acknowledged and been told that the Village of Waterloo has a sewer capacity problem, that they are in the process of trying to address. When the West Shores subdivision was originally developed, there was an interlocal agreement that was entered into between the SID and the Village of Waterloo. This is a little bit unusual, because when we come to, for a, for a project with the city of Omaha, which is within, you know, the city's jurisdiction, we have city sewers. So all of the, all of the agreements that are, relate to sanitary sewer are contained within the subdivision agreement. Well, at the, at the time this was developed, it was in Douglas County, and the Village of Waterloo was not, you know, was not within their ETJ. And so the SID had to enter into an agreement with the Village of Waterloo to provide sewer service. And in exchange, and as part of that agreement, there was an agreement from the SID to make a monetary contribution, I think it was a couple million dollars, towards the expansion of the sanitary sewer system. And as part of that agreement, they specified in great detail the number of units and amount of flow that could come, that the SID could create, and that the Village of Waterloo could create, so that they made sure that they were not going to exceed the capacity of the sewer system. Well, what's happened since is the Village of Waterloo and the developments around the village have expanded in a much greater fashion than what was contemplated by that agreement. So they've exceeded the number of households that are being served by that sewer system. The SID, meaning West Shores, is still under the capacity that's contemplated by that agreement. And that's, I'm not going to testify as to the, the engineering part of this. Caleb's here to do that, and he submitted a letter to the planning board. But the conclusion is that even with this project and the rest of the commercial development, that we will be within or under those capacities, under the total capacities for the SID. That doesn't solve the problem, and we've talked about, and there's a condition in this, is that one of the conditions that the city has asked in this conditional use permit is that the developer agree that before we have, can get a certificate of occupancy on the site, that we will have an engineer, professional engineer certify that the Village of Waterloo has capacity to provide sanitary sewer for the project. And we're agreeable to do that. And quite frankly, and as we talked about even at the last meeting, Jerry doesn't have any interest in spending a lot of money building apartments, or even designing, spending a lot of design fees on apartments, until he knows that there's going to be sewer capacity to be able to service this project. And frankly, there's a lot of other projects that are ongoing in the Village of Waterloo that they have a problem today that they need to, to fix, and it's our understanding that that process is ongoing, that they've hired, hired, or at least met with some consultants to start to evaluate that project. So we don't have any issue with that condition, and we believe that we just need to be able to move forward so that when this, when we're satisfied that we can close on the ground and move forward with the project, because the sewer is being addressed, that we can do that. So I'd ask today that, that you please grant the conditional use permit that's before you, subject to the conditions that are within the report. And we would love to have the opportunity to answer any questions or respond to rebuttal to, I think, the testimony that you're going to hear from, from both the HOA and maybe some of the residents out there. So, thank you.
Okay, are there any?
I'll go ahead and leave, leave the site plan up.
Yeah, that's fine. Any other proponents that wish to speak? No? Okay. Are there any opponents that wish to speak? How many are going to speak on this? Just raise your hands, please. Okay. Again, I'm going, I'm going to try and limit your conversations to, you know, a certain amount of time, and, and limit it to new testimony and not repetitive testimony, okay? Please.
My name is Clancy Peterson, 14747 California Street. I'm here on behalf of the Sanitary Improvement District to talk about the sanitary sewer issue. I think Mr. Bouzier hit the, informed you pretty well of the interlocal agreement and the capacity issue. The district's concern here is that there is a wastewater treatment facility capacity problem, and in discussing this with the engineers for the developer, they seem inclined to certify that there is capacity based on the, the contract, the interlocal agreement, but they were less concerned about the actual capacity with Waterloo. And I think that's evident by the application that's been submitted. There is no information as to what the actual capacity is for Waterloo, and there, there doesn't seem to be a lot of interest in that, at least with this submission. Waterloo is, as far as the district knows, in, has engaged JEO to perform a capacity study that should be done in a couple months, so we know exactly what the capacity is at the wastewater treatment facility. And then they're going to be able to make a determination whether they upgrade the existing facility, or if they need to get plans for, for a brand-new facility. This is kind of an awkward position for the SID. SIDs normally aren't going to show up at these meetings and oppose the development within the district. The district is not opposed to development or infrastructure stuff coming in here. It is this interlocal agreement. It's knowing that there is a capacity problem here, and it's the fact that the engineers for the developers have said, there is capacity under this agreement, this interlocal agreement, so we expect the district to sue Waterloo in order to protect that capacity for the district. Well, if Waterloo is already doing that, they're already moving forward to take care of the known issue. The district doesn't think that it's appropriate to force a lawsuit, or a lawsuit isn't necessary.
Yeah, a good question for you real quick. So let's take hypothetically at this point, if this were approved, what would this do for the tax base of the SID?
That all depends on whether or not the building can be constructed and the capacity is generated.
Let's say it, it could be constructed, and, and it were built as, as proposed here.
It, it would increase the tax base for the SID, but this is not an SID that's hurt for cash. There, there's a well-developed SID. This is one of the last empty lots here. It's not like they, they need this tax base in order to grow and keep developing.
You have that?
Okay. I, I am a relief pitcher here. The normal attorney for this has a conflict of interest, so I have a, a bit of a limited knowledge. I've been, I think, plugged in for about a month, month and a half, maybe, so I don't have the answer to that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other opponents that wish to speak?
Good afternoon. Christian Williams, Domino Law Group, 2425 South 144th Street here in Omaha. I'm here to speak in part on behalf of West Shores Lake and Homeowners Association. Carl, the HOA president, will talk about some issues that I'm not going to touch on. Conceptually, my presentation is this. The zoning in this area should matter. It is purposely zoned this way because all the, all the lots that surround it, that are not within this picture, are too, consist of approximately 291 single-family residential units. We're not, the area was zoned specifically for commercial use. What does commercial use mean in this occasion? It means that consistent with the zoning, consistent with the covenants of the HOA that were originally designed, is that the commercial lots were designed to serve the residents that are there, not to bring in additional residents in opposition of what everybody originally planned this design to be. And as the board can see, Lot 2 is a perfect example of this. Lot 2 is, has an event center, it has a restaurant that's well-known to this community. It's serving the purpose of the residents. It even has a, an area in which the boat owners, which are the people that are the residents of this community, can actually drive their boats off, off low to attend events, get dinner, whatever they want to do. It's designed with the specific residents in mind. The approval, if that is what the board chooses to do here, would only burden the HOA. What I heard in the proponent presentation was a lot of hopefully's. Hopefully, that the, that the probable tenants for this development will behave themselves. Hopefully, they won't jump in the lake. Hopefully, they will listen to signage that they put up. Hopefully, they may come to a point where there's some amenity that's a benefit to somebody outside of the tenants, because as of right now, it's just an apartment complex. There's nothing here for the board to consider. It's all illusions. It's not a promise to you. I just want to be that, be very clear with that. The minute that, if this project is approved, all of that can go away, and the development can just go as it is. There's no assurances that there will be further cooperation out of the apartment developers once this meeting is over. So in terms of the hopefully's, the apartment tenants will behave themselves, or their guests, or whoever, will behave themselves when it comes to restricting lake usage, which is exclusive to the lot, residential lot owners. The HOA is already tasked with that, but essentially what they're being asked is to absorb additional responsibility for people that they're not familiar with at their own expense, because there, there is no promise that there'll be cost sharing for boat patrols as are occurring as, as of today. There's also no assurances that there will be additional compensation towards any other burden that the HOA has to absorb, such as further events, which they already experienced traffic issues during the holidays, when the traffic will in fact bleed out into the major arterial roads for this development. Nothing here that has been suggested that will occur, short of it being within this development project, is a promise. It will go away as soon as this development is approved, if that's what the board chooses to do. And finally, I'd just like to read into the record an email from April 30, 2025, from Mary Ann Borgensen, Borgeson, who is a Douglas County Board of Commissioner member. It's going to read as follows. "Good afternoon. I am writing to request that you vote against proposed 124-unit apartment development at West Shores. Beyond the safety, liability, and water and sewer concerns raised by the residents, I am also worried about how this type of development will detract from the unique and beautiful environment that the lake residents have long appreciated. Furthermore, I believe that the issue of citizen representation is extremely important and warrants serious consideration. While I understand that the three-mile extraterritorial jurisdiction is legally established, I do not believe it is appropriate for the development to be approved and imposed on Douglas County citizens who lack representation by city-elected officials. This lack of representation is a significant concern. Although I recognize that the technical zoning criteria may align, I urge you to consider factors beyond these technicalities. I believe the planning members should assess whether the development truly fits with the existing lifestyle, both aesthetically and in light of the aforementioned safety, liability, water, and sewer issues. As a sole elected representative for these residents, I respectfully ask for your no vote on this development." She then, after what I believe was the time period in which all the discussions occurred between the, the previous meeting of this board and this one, she wrote the board again, indicating that on July 1st, that she was reiterating her opposition to this development. And I'll just read that briefly, since it's a little shorter. Just says, "Good afternoon. I am writing to reiterate my request that you vote against the proposed West Shores development. The residents of West Shores have overwhelmingly expressed their disapproval of this development with a vote of over 270 to 1 against it. While I understand there have been some changes that have been proposed, those changes were not significant enough to sway the residents. Please refer to my previous email for a more previous, more detailed explanation of my concerns and requests. I also request that my original email from April 30th, within this email string, be read into the record at your meeting," which I've done. Thank you very much."
Thank you. Any other opponents?
I'm Gary Demel. Live at 545 South 249th Circle out at West Shores, and I am the chairman of the SID 453 at West Shores. As an SID, we want to be a good neighbor and do not want to oppose development, but the proposed apartment complex puts our SID in a very difficult position. As you heard, the wastewater treatment plant at Waterloo is at capacity and can't handle development, but we've always had a good relationship with the city of Waterloo. And the engineering calculations that they did is anything... And the engineering calculations that they did is, anything over 107 apartments would have pushed us into violation of our sewer agreement with the city of Waterloo. So, they dropped it down to 106, which puts us right on the edge of our sewer agreement. And there's two additional lots that are right across the street, and another one by the medical that are not developed yet either. And the calculations that were done to keep us underneath the sewer agreement is those are going to be commercial, which commercial uses a lot less sewage than the residential does. But if those end up being conditional use permits and apartments there, then we're in a real fight with Waterloo, and we're not looking to be into a fight. You know, and I guess another safety issue, this apartment complex would be the only residential building in the Waterloo Fire District that is over three stories tall. On a three-story building, the Fire District can use 40-foot ladders to rescue people in an emergency situation. A building as tall as this apartment complex requires an aerial truck for a rescue for the upper floors during an emergency situation. The Waterloo Fire District does not have an aerial truck and does not have money in their budget for one. They have reciprocity with the Omaha Fire District, and one is available at 144th and Maple Street, but that's only if it's not in use someplace else. So, I hope you would consider these items. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Any other opponents that wish to speak?
Good afternoon. My name is Mark Dunbar. My address is 25001 Emily Circle, which is Lot 143 in the West Shores subdivision. I previously submitted written testimony to this board, and I won't reiterate that, but I do ask that you give your attention to it. I wanted to address a couple of points. One was with regard to the wastewater treatment, which, of course, is a very important matter in your criteria that the developer has to overcome. We recently received the copy of the Lampre Neerson report discussing or attempting to illustrate that this project is not going to exceed the capacity that our interlocal agreement with Waterloo has in it. And that's important, because if we are found, as residents of the SAD, to push the SAD over that limit, they're going to have us financially at a tremendous disadvantage, because we will be in breach of the agreement, and we will be liable beyond just our usage fees. So, it's a serious concern whether or not, in fact, the subdivision is going to stay within the interlocal agreement when it's fully developed. So, what they did is presented you with various numbers, and I only recently came into possession of this revised part of the application, but it's painfully obvious that they are pressing the numbers in an unfair manner. What you will look at in that chart is you will see that they estimated the wastewater usage in the subdivision by looking back at the October 2022 wastewater flows from our pumping equipment. And they did that to get a wet condition, that is, you know, when the rain and other things are exacerbating things, and they applied calculations from that. What they did not consider and did not do is look at whether October of 2022 was a representative wet month. In fact, it was exceedingly low rainfall, far below... well, far below the average of any month in the district. So, I don't think the calculations are correct. I'm not a civil engineer. I can't tell you that it's incorrect, but it's obvious to me that using October of 2022 is inappropriate, because it's a very dry month, and it's not appropriate for considering the impact that rain has on the wastewater system. Other factors that were inappropriately considered in that Lampre Neerson report was they took that data, and they said there are 282 homes in the neighborhood. I was on the board at that time. There were not 282 completed homes in the subdivision at that time. A substantial majority of our 49 off-lake lots were under construction at that time. I don't know what the number is, but it was not 282. There are also a half a dozen lots that are still unbuilt on the lake that aren't included in that number. There are 293 lots, and so any number, there are just a few homes that have a home built on two lots. Most other homes are going to be built eventually. I believe these numbers were used in that report to understate the wastewater contribution of the residential properties. That's very significant. Finally, in estimating the capacity of the neighborhood, and this may be my most important point on this subject, they pointed out that there are undeveloped commercial lots, 5.4 acres. This project is four. When they looked at those other undeveloped lots, which, under Omaha zoning, are commercial, they applied a normal commercial use to it, so that the wastewater contribution would be minor. There's no particular reason that this board should assume, or that our SAD should assume, that those other lots aren't likewise going to be conditional use apartments, and the number will clearly, clearly put the SAD in breach of the interlocal agreement. What that means is that this developer and this project will take us right up to the limit and leave nothing but limited commercial use on the other 5.4 acres of development. You can see by the chart that they're right up to the limit, and what I'm telling you is there's no background information of how these numbers were deduced, how they arrived at them, and how they are appropriate. It is our... it is our, myself and the other residents of the community, that are going to be forced to pay the price of violating the interlocal agreement that was established by the developer when this was set up. What's apparent is that it was never contemplated that the lots in question today and the lots that are undeveloped were going to have this level of intensity of use. If they did contemplate multifamily on any of it, they would have provided for a higher limitation. And that'll bring me to my last point, which is one that I made in my recent letter to you. You were told at the last hearing that there were no covenants that are applicable to this development. I believe that's an incorrect statement. The covenants, which I've cited in my prior correspondence, clearly refer to Lot 243, which is the entirety of the Marina area, including these other lots, and the covenants, which were made by the developer that owned the lot at that time, said that these will be commercial use, zoned and designated as commercial. Now, in the year 2000, when the developer did that, "commercial" under Douglas County zoning meant "commercial." It did not include "multifamily." It still doesn't under Douglas County. Commercial meant "commercial," and that's what the developer sold. That's what the developer bound his own lot, 243, of which these lots are a subdivision of today, and that's what the neighbors are complaining about. The covenants that we bought under, that were created by the developer, that define our subdivision, say that these lots will be for commercial use, meaning businesses like restaurants and offices and such. Nobody has a problem with that development. What I and others have a problem with is putting up 75-story buildings... I'm sorry, 75-foot-tall buildings that have tremendous bulk. That's going to leave everybody in Omaha saying, "Gee, remember when West Shores used to be a beautiful suburban residential community before those giant apartment complex, those giant apartment buildings started going in?" And we all know that there are more commercial lots. This isn't going to be the end of it. So, my point is, your job in applying the criteria that guide you is to consider the neighborhood, and what the neighborhood was defined by was that subdivision plat and the commitments in those covenants that was made by the original developer and that we have all relied on for years, until somebody came along a couple of months ago and said, "Gee, I can squeeze multifamily into that commercial," because Omaha interprets "commercial" differently than was the case when these covenants were drafted. It's my position that you owe it to the neighborhood to apply your criteria, to consider what the character of this community was supposed to be, what size the buildings were supposed to be. Every lot in West Shores is over... has got one house on a half an acre or more. They're proposing to put approximately 50 homes on two acres. This is going to forever change the character of the neighborhood and the commitments that were made by the developer who put the covenants on them, which covenants specifically restrict the development of this property to "commercial" and not "multifamily." And I would ask that you deny this application.
Thank you, Mark. Please be quiet. Not... I'm serious. If I hear that again, I'm going to ask you to be removed, okay? We're not going to have that this time. Any other opponents?
Good afternoon. My name is Carl A. Bordle, Jr. My address is 25011 Capital Circle, Waterloo, Nebraska. I'm a resident of West Shores. I'm also the HOA West Shores president. It's kind of nice not going first, because so many things have been talked about. What I wanted to kind of chat about is there was a process. So, we were here in April, and what I really took away from that is you guys were like, "Go away, try to become friends, figure something out." And we did that, and the developer, and Larry, the property owner, we had a number of meetings. And in that process, we ended up at a point where the developer offered three solutions. We've kind of talked about it, 40 condos, 16 condos, and 48 apartments, or 90 apartments. And the way it was presented to us and what the plan was, was that we were going to take those three options. Before they spent the money and went through the expense of building them out, drawing them out to come here, let's figure out kind of what was going to be required, what's the neighbor going to accept. And we did that. We took that. Two representatives, Corey Taylor and myself, were at those meetings. We took it to the board. The board moved forward. We took it to a small group of residents to kind of float it by them. That was positive. We then had a three-hour meeting with our entire association, presented all of the options on the table, and then went to a poll. And the poll, if you remember back in April, I'm sure you do, there was like one person in the neighborhood had voted in favor, which was Jerry, and everybody else was against it. This time, it wasn't the case. We had, and I don't... I think it's 73 is the exact number, but it's around there, people that chose one of the condo options as their first choice, knowing that condos, and I agree, have to have lake access, right? There may be more boats on the lake. We went through a whole analysis centered around that, but we were at 73. Far cry from 75% that would make a covenant change, but the message that we brought back was, we believe that the current plan doesn't provide what the neighbors would want, but a revised plan that brought value and benefit to the owners, their families, and their guests, we thought we could get there. At the time we had the meeting to discuss the outcome, the start of the meeting, we were informed, we've already drawn up 106 units, we've submitted it, that's what we're going forward with. I'm sure heard that, you know, that we didn't get 75% of the people who wanted condos, but still, there was a process in play. And the thing that concerns me the most about that is the solution was, after many meetings, negotiations, time spent, 40, 48, 16, or 90 apartments. If we felt that, you know, the developer felt that to go forward was, "Well, they're not going to prove lake access. We'll build out the apartments." Why weren't we at 90? 90 is what they offered. It wasn't a number we came up with, but no, the number is 106, which is one less than their sewer analysis said would put us over the limit. So, during that process, we were accused a number of times of not negotiating in good faith. Makes me feel that maybe they weren't negotiating in good faith. Was this a waste of our time to keep us busy while they manage sewage agreement, build out their apartment complex for 106? I just worry. And we hear things like, "We'll help you manage. We'll put verbiage in our lease agreements," and, you know, all these things were talked about during it. "But let's get the big things out of the way, and then we'll follow up on the little things." I personally am not sure that I have a lot of faith that we'll ever get to follow up on the little things. The only official statement we received from the developer during the course of these conversations is, "Well, if they're in the lake, it's private property. It's trespassing. Call the sheriff." Really? Sheriff won't come out for something like that. Then I'm going to call Douglas County Sheriff and say, "Hey, Sheriff Aaron, can you come out here, because there's some guy swimming in the marina? They aren't coming." And this isn't a concern... I mean, A, it's a state law, they can't swim in the marina, but someone's going to get hurt. The gas pump that we utilize is on Lot A, Outlet A, right in the middle of this. We don't expect someone in there. Once again, if somebody gets hurt, something happens, that liability is going to fall on us. And some signage, the developer doesn't want to do offense, I get that, but, you know, throwing a couple of signs up to, you know, somebody's friends that are coming over, is that going to do it? No, we're going to have to observe the cost. We're going to have the enhanced liability or extended liability for this, and we're going to absorb that expense of doing this. Once again, I propose that they contribute something for each unit in the apartments. Well, we'll talk about that later. Yeah, kind of like the 90. So, I just... I'm very concerned about that. Another thing I do want to bring out, Outlet A, right there, this little area, that's actually a gas pump. It's an inlet of the water, one of the features of the lake since we moved out there, owned by Transformation Realty. We have a lease for it. It's an annual lease. I can tell you, during these negotiations, a couple of times, it's brought up, "Man, you think everybody would like to carry the gas down for their boats, five gallons at a time? You know, what if you just lost access to that gas pump? Really? Good faith?" I have a concern about that. Century Development, we were there recently, and we talk about why neighbors are upset. Mark Dunbar clearly stated the covenant that directly references this property as "commercial use in Marina for the benefit of the lot owners, their families, and their guests." Another thing to keep in mind, and I get it, developers make promises all... oop, I did it. See, I hadn't done that the whole time. Developers make promises all the time they don't keep. Real estate agents, they lie all the time. Well, this is what was drawn up by avant architects, is what the Marina was going to be for all of us. That picture today is still on the wall at Century Development. Let's see if I do this right. As Frank's baby. And now we get 106 units of apartments. So, it just... it doesn't feel right, doesn't seem right, and it's just not right. So, I ask that you guys deny the conditional use permit at this point. We can come up with a project that makes everybody happy somewhere down the road, but what's here right now feels like it's just something that's trying to be forced upon us without us really having much of a say in it. So, with that, I thank you very much for your time, and I hope you make a good decision for us. Thank you.
Thanks, Carl. Thanks, Carl. Okay. Any other opponents who wish to speak? Please come forward.
My name is Terry Ferleo. I reside 24803 Jones Circle, Waterloo. I am a West Shores resident and also a member of the Waterloo Fire Department Board of Directors. And it was touched briefly earlier by Gary Demel regarding fire rescue and the size of the building, four to five stories, whatever it's going to be. And I, you know, I Googled the Omaha Fire Department response targets for responding, and it says their targets include arrival of a fire truck aiming to be on the scene in fire in four to five minutes. Arrival of ladder truck, goal of arriving within eight minutes. Rapid deployment, the deployment emphasizes the importance of fast response to fire and medical emergencies with a goal of getting crews out the door within 60 seconds or less receiving a call. The second point there regarding a ladder truck within eight minutes, as Gary pointed out, the nearest ladder truck is 144th and Maple, which is approximately 12.5 miles away. If you Google AI and ask the timeframe, it's 20 to 25-minute response time. That far exceeds the Omaha Fire Department response target for a ladder unit and represents, to me, danger... dangerous situation for the apartment dwellers or even the houses around that area. As Carl pointed out, there is a gas pump located right on the point there, which is fairly close to the apartment complex. Should there be a fire that burns out of hand and reaches those gas pumps, it could create a drastic environmental catastrophe for them that would need to be, you know, covered by the HOA or, you know, whoever to clean that up. So, there's safety and fire concerns that we have approximately based on Omaha Fire Department's response targets.
Terry, a question for you. Are you with the Fire Department?
I'm on the Board of Directors. I'm not with the Fire Department.
Okay. Are you familiar with the equipment that's used?
Yes.
Okay. So, what kind of trucks do they have at Waterloo?
We have a... we have an engine, you know, a regular fire truck engine with ladders. We have a pumper truck, and we have emergency vehicles. In fact, we just put in a bond issue for a new engine, because the other one was outdated, so it's due to come in July. So, even to purchase another agent, we'd have to go through a whole bond measure in order to do that, would put a tax burden on the residents of Waterloo, additional tax burden.
Okay.
Terry, would this be the Walu district?
Yes, it is.
In the Waterloo District?
Yes, it is. That's what would be.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other opponents who wish to speak? Please come forward.
Good afternoon. My name is Robert Tupper. My wife, Tupper, like Tupperware. My wife and I own a property in the... My wife and I own a property in the West Shores subdivision, eight seventeen South 251st Street. My comments are going to be very brief. I'm a retired engineer. I like to measure things. When I heard about the seventy to seventy-five foot height of this building, I kind of looked around. The flagpole for other residents at West Shores is fifty-one feet above. The lighthouse at the north entrance to West Shores is about fifty-two feet above ground. So I kind of thought, what's the representation so that people can picture what a seventy to seventy-five foot building is? So I lugged an old trance that I had in the basement to Village Point and measured Shields, a well-known building. The gable at the top of Shields is less than seventy feet above ground. So for everyone, just so you can picture what seventy feet looks like, think about the main gables on the north and south entrances to Shields. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other opponents? Any rebuttal? Jim, do you want to come back up or anybody want? I'd like to have someone come up from Lampar Neerson.
Yeah, I'll have Caleb. Maybe that'd be great, I think, to address the sewer question. So I just, maybe, I'm just got a couple of quick things. First of all, I want to defend Jerry's integrity because it's been questioned a couple, by a couple of people today, and that is, Jerry's, I've worked with Jerry for a number of years. He's a reputable apartment developer in our community, and he doesn't fib or lie or do things that he says he's not going to do. And so when we say we're going to cooperate with the HOA and we're going to keep them informed of the project and try and work with them going forward, I would take his word for that because he's got a reputation in our community, and I think it's a good one. And I just, I don't like people saying things like that when, about people that are good behaviors in our community. So that's all I will say on that. I think that Caleb's going to speak to some of the engineering on the sewer, so Mark is not a, today, a professional engineer that's qualified, I don't think, to talk about some of these sewer issues, but I think Caleb can maybe give some clarity on some of the, maybe some of the issues that were raised. On the covenants issue that Mark indicated that somehow our lots are restricted by the existing HOA covenants, they were not recorded against these commercial lots, and they do not provide a legal restriction against, against these commercial lots. So while there is reference in the HOA covenants for the homeowner association, for the residential lots, they do not bind the commercial lots. So that's all I really want to say on that. And then on the, just one comment by Carl, that I, the ninety units was, we put that on the table, that if these residents could support a ninety-unit apartment complex, that's what we would do, but we were told that they would not support that. We were up against the cemental deadline to be able to come to the meeting today with the revised plan, which we think is better than what was presented at the April. We could have left it the way it was, but we wanted to show good faith in what we've done with the project since the last planning board meeting. So that's all I have. Caleb?
Jim, one question for you, maybe for you or somebody else.
You got Mike?
But one question was, one item was brought up that I had not heard before, and that's Outlet A and the gas pump that's on Outlet.
Yes.
Would there still be access to Lot A for the gas?
So the, the gas access is actually for boats that drive up to that gas pump. So that's always been the case and will continue to be the case. The, actually, that Outlet B is now owned by the HOA, and so they have control of that through, or it's leased. I'm not, I'm not sure what the arrangement is, but they, they do have access to that, to that gas pump today, and they always will.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Name and address, please.
Good afternoon. Caleb Snyder with Lampar Neerson, 14710 West Dodge Road, Omaha, Nebraska. Um, yeah, just maybe to provide a little background on kind of our, our efforts to date. So Lampar Neerson was engaged by the property owners of Lot One, Replat Three and Replat Four to provide some sanitary sewer analysis for the existing interlocal. And so kind of one of our first efforts after we were engaged was to go meet with the Village of Waterloo. And at that meeting, the initial meeting, it was kind of an informal educational meeting where we kind of shared where we were to date with our analysis, with our site plan, with our project, and then they also kind of highlighted some efforts that they have ongoing. At that point, everybody kind of realized where everybody's guessing with what the capacity of both the existing West Shore system is and also their wastewater treatment plant. So how we left that meeting was our group, our team, would go back and start an analysis of the proposed development and how it would relate to the existing interlocal. The Village of Waterloo, they had some ongoing efforts. They were meeting with other consultants to analyze their existing system. So I want to be clear that to date, it's not our intention, it's not our, any part of our analysis that we would certify the existing wastewater treatment plant. There's those ongoing efforts with the Village of Waterloo. I think our project team has identified that we have no intention of developing a project that ultimately can't sewer, but that is outside of kind of our current efforts. So I want to make sure that we hit on that. As part of our efforts, we met with the SID's engineers a couple of different times to establish some basic parameters, to make sure that we had an agreed-upon methodology of the analysis so that we could conduct our, our review of it. And so I know it was stated, there were some questions about how we arrived at the existing residential flows. And I'm going to share, so this is, this is an agreement, or that document, that was prepared by the SID, four ninety-three, sorry, four fifty-three, their engineer, Brickyard Consulting.
When was that?
Um, this was in March 29, 2025. And so at that time, they came up with the analysis for the existing residential component. And they used the pump data, so they looked at four different months. They looked at August, September, October, December. They arrived at an average pump flow of, let's call it, seventy-nine thousand GPD. So I believe there was some coordination between the SID engineer and the SID board where they weren't comfortable using an average, and they asked the SID engineer to use the high one, which was October's at eighty-nine, eighty-nine thousand gallons per day. So that is the, that is the value. That's where we arrived at. That's where we used that value for our analysis for that existing residential component. It's also, there was also mentioned that the current calculations show that we're right up to the limit for the agreed-upon or the allowed-upon one hundred and thirty gallons per day. I want to state, or want to show that there's roughly eight thousand GPD still remaining, even with our analysis, that does account or include the vacant lots to the north of the apartment building. There's eight thousand gallons that are still remaining that would keep us under that one hundred and thirty thousand. To put that in perspective for people, one person is roughly one hundred GPD. So to that, I hate doing math on the stand, but there's, there's still, is that eighty? Eighty, eighty people that are remaining that could still, that you could have a mixture of one or two-bedroom units and still be under that flow in that agreed-upon or in that existing interlocal. There's one other thing. Oh, as far as the future land use for the lots to the north, again, we don't have proposed use in those other than what the zoning, so that's what we relied on for those flows from that, a commercial use. My expectation would be that in the future, if something else was proposed for those, they'd have to come through a similar process, and they'd have to show calculations that their new intended use would still fall within the parameters in that interlocal. So with that, I'm here to answer any questions. Hopefully I wasn't too technical and talked over you.
There was another question, Caleb, that Mark had about the number two eighty-two, the number of units that were used in that table.
Sure.
Can't remember exactly how it was worded, but can you explain that?
Um, again, so there was, that was coordination with Brickyard Consulting, the SID's engineer, because initially we were using a higher value. I can't, I think it was like two ninety or something. There are a number of lots out there that haven't technically been replatted, but one owner owns two different lots, and so they have one structure. So that's why the, the number of lots that are out there today doesn't exactly coincide with the number of units that we're carrying in our report.
Does that also include the, the lots that have not been built on yet?
Um, it, it does not, and that was at the direction of Brickyard Consulting. So I think there's like three vacant lots out there still. Again, when we, our initial math show, included those, based off of their initial, their presentation and their, their math, they, they had been asked to exclude those, so that's how we proceeded also.
Caleb, do you, do you see this, a lot taking it up to the very threshold on developments? Has that happened quite a bit? Because I mean, I, I don't see enough of these to, to know, and maybe you could help me with that.
That's the intention, is to, that, correct, that's what, that's what it's intended for.
And why 2022?
Um, say that one more time. Why 2022?
Why is 2022, October 2022, chosen?
Um, because it was the highest of the four months.
And what about, what about more recent years?
Again, that was the SID engineer, they provided us that information. Weren't, we weren't, or we weren't given the background why that. That's just what they had used in their initial analysis.
This is the SID's own engineer?
Correct. Yes.
Did you meet with them after your findings?
Yeah, we did. We shared them, this with them.
Any, any?
Um, the feedback that we got was the, the engineering seemed logical. They said that they couldn't agree or disagree with us on the spot. They all ultimately needed to go back and talk to the SID, but they did not state any major concerns that they had when we met with them, or, or after even sharing it with them via email.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Caleb. Okay. Go ahead. I haven't closed the pod here yet, but I'll actually come back up.
I know this, again, Mark Dunbar, again, I know this is an important point for the board, so I do want to be very clear what I'm saying. By using October of 2022, and I must criticize, this, this report from Lampar Neerson is simply hearsay on top of hearsay. Some other engineer said something, and they just simply took it at face value. They didn't provide any backup or verify it. What I'm telling you is, I got this report yesterday. Go on weather.com and look up October of 2022. You will find it is one of the driest months ever. But if you look at this report that they prepared, it looks like it's gone. Their calculation of the wastewater flows on the residential works backwards by taking the flow in October of 2022, considering it a wet month and working back to what it is. The problem, here are the problems, though. Number one, October wasn't a wet month at all. They aren't getting an indicative indication of what the impact of rainfall is on it, as the report clearly indicates they intended to do. They are also using a number that is too high. The number of homes that were actually in use in October is much lower than two hundred and eighty-two because the subdivision was not fully built out at that time. And I haven't had time to go back and get the records, but it's not my job to. They're the engineers. They're just taking a friendly number. They wanted to take the highest number, two hundred and ninety-one, and say, "That's it." But of course, that's the most advantageous number they can take. What I'm telling you is that the report, and I have a background, I was an architect, and I'm an attorney. I'm not out here just making this stuff up. These numbers need to be backed up. They've used October, which was an extraordinarily dry month and is not an appropriate baseline. They just, I, the report doesn't say that, but now he says they took the highest of the four months. Well, everyone knows how much it rains in August. Not much. I'm just telling you by easily internet verifying, October of 2022 was a very dry month. I can explain. The reason they went back to 2022 is they were trying to find the flow that existed before the View building was built and began pumping wastewater into the system. So I assume that logically, that's why they went back to that number, because that would give them an indication of the wastewater that they could use for calculating the load that was actually being imposed by the homes. But if you choose a month that's too low, you're going to get a number that's going to look like you can handle it when you in fact can't. And so what'll happen, a couple of years from now, when all this is built out and we start exceeding our interlocal agreement, we in the community are going to have to pay the financial price because this lot has pushed us up to the limit. The other point that I was making, the applicant here is Lori Smith, Larry Smith and Transformation Realty. They are the owners of these two lots across the street here. They are the ones that one can only assume are going to be back a few years from now saying, "We'd like to put apartments on there. You allowed apartments on these other commercial lots here. Why can't we put apartments on there?" And the reason is, these, the community was not designed with multifamily in, for these units here. And you grant them here, how are you going to deny them on the next lot? It's because the community can't support it. It wasn't designed to support this multifamily load. The other points that were not addressed, I did miss one. They gave you the flows from the Salted Edge Restaurant and said, "Well, it's got a capacity in there of one hundred and eighty." Well, that report appears to ignore the fact that the Salted Edge Restaurant, which is just this front corner of the building, they ignored all of the other retail uses on the first floor of that building. There's a yoga studio. There was a, there was a donut shop that has changed, which may, they may or not have picked up. There's a florist. There's a realtor. There are other flows. I'm just telling you myself, as a design professional in my background, this report doesn't have the backup that one would expect to find to support the numbers here because as this board has noticed, they're right up to the limit. And they only get there by assuming even though they're a commercial unit, a commercial lot, and they want to put in the most dense use they can, that these other lots, these two over here and the one that's off by the medical office building, they're not going to be able to build up to the limit because that clearly is going to blow through the limits that the neighborhood subdivision put on itself when they made that interlocal agreement. Why should this developer get to go in and, and blow past the assumptions that were made without any financial consequence? That's all going to come back and land on us later. So thank you for letting me make that clear.
Thank you.
Is it possible that the flows are over right now?
Pardon me?
You said it wasn't all developed in 2022. You've got all these uses that maybe weren't being considered. Is it possible they're, you are over now?
So what they did is they went back and said, what, what I believe the logic of the report is, just reading it, is they went back and said, "We're going to look at October 2022." They didn't say it, but logically to me, they did that because the, the commercial building was not complete, and they, they weren't contributing. So all of the flow at that time was for the two hundred and, I would guess, I don't know, but two hundred and sixty-five homes, the ninety thousand, I believe it's like ninety thousand gallons they got, that was being contributed by whatever houses were built and occupied in October 2022. And that's the, the basis for this whole report. They try to back in the numbers by saying, "Well, we'll assume that whatever it was in October of 2022 is a wet condition," and, and that from that total number, we can back into what each house is contributing. I don't know the answer, whether the standard engineering assumption would have gotten them a, a bigger number, would have been a hundred and fifty instead of the one hundred and twenty-five they have. But listening to this, as an attorney or as an architect, I'm sitting here saying, "Well, I'm an engineer, but I simply took some numbers that I got in conversation with another engineer. I've got no backup to define where it's coming from." And yet they're asking you to approve this development and say, "Yep, we think that they have demonstrated that there's enough capacity in this sewer system because we've analyzed the existing uses in October, and we've tried to extrapolate, using the most conservative numbers we can, what it'll be like when it's fully built out." If any one of the other lots wanted to put apartments, we'd clearly be over because in that report, they used a very low commercial value. So they are putting the SID in a position where they're not going to be able to accommodate any of the other applicants that might go forward. Now, if the applicant, which is Transformation Realty, which owns one of these properties, was to say, "Oh, we'll commit. There's not going to be any apartments on those two lots," that might be a basis for doing this. But they want you to assume nobody else in the future is going to come before this board and ask to build apartments in that commercial zoning. And that's, that's not logical. That's not logical at all.
The sewer seems to be a very big deal. It's not the sewer system, it's the treatment plan.
Well, I think we have two issues. The interlocal agreement, which defines our financial responsibility, and then their ability to handle it.
Let me, let me finish.
Okay.
That, the big concern, as I understand it, is that-
That, the big concern, as I understand it, is that if you go over that number, that, that opens up the SID having to renegotiate an inter-local agreement, because you've got too much flow going there, under whatever circumstances that occurs. That's why I'm asking, it's a pump station. It records its data. Why do we not have 2020, why don't we have yesterday's data? It's there. So I, which, you know, that's, that's a question for Lamb, that's a question for the engineers. I'm just saying, I'm sitting here seeing, hearing that there's this big concern, from the SID standpoint, over this for lots of reasons. But the finance, a financial reason is that, if you go over that inter-local agreement, you lose your leverage. I heard somebody say in the earlier session that, as, you know, we have the right, no matter what they do with their plan, to have that flow level.
Correct.
We don't have, you know, they can't come back at us. We're giving them what we agreed to, and giving them no more. And so, I'm sitting here saying, that's a piece of data I'd like to know an answer to.
Waterloo can't financially penalize our SID if we stay under the flows. But if this board authorizes development, which is going to push our SID into default, under that inter-local agreement, we're going to be beyond just having to pay what we all as ratepayers are going to have to pay as consumers of the wastewater, we're going to be in breach of our agreement, and they're going to say, well, you, you've got to pay money. You don't, you don't have any right to do that, because you have overdeveloped your subdivision, you're now pushing far more into our system than we ever anticipated, and, you know, from a negotiating position, you, you would be putting our SID in a financially very unfavorable position. We have no leverage, we're in breach of the agreement.
Yeah, I'm not agreeing or disagreeing with you, I'm just saying, it's, it's an unsolved piece of data that seems to be very important.
Okay.
Thank you.
So Caleb, would you like to come back up?
I would, thank you.
And name and address again?
Caleb Snyder, Lampar Nielsen, 14710 West Dowd Road, Omaha, Nebraska. So, again, to iterate about the pump data. This was information, this was data that was supplied by the SID's engineer itself. They prepared this initial report back in March 2025. Based off of their conversations with the SID board, they, they went from average of the four months to, to utilizing the highest value. Our team was not coming in to dispute that, our team was to kind of, came in to take that, and then build that as our baseline, and then build from there. So, there is no mathematical gymnast, gymnastics here, that we're trying to manipulate the numbers to, to be what they are. This is the data that was given to us by the SID, their engineer themselves. We took it, analyzed it, and saw how the proposed project fell, falls within those parameters.
Can you address Mr. Tondal's question about why we couldn't use current data?
Um, I would, I would ask, I guess, the SID if they have that, that they could supply for us?
Do you know I'm an engineer?
Absolutely, yep, correct.
I'm a traffic engineer. If I used three or four-year-old counts to justify something that's going on today, I'd be laughed out of the room.
I will say that, we went back and looked at, I'm going to switch over here, looked at what this equates to a per, per unit contribution. And so we're talking about the residential lots right here. And so the value, based off of the pump data, it gives you 128 gallons per day, per house. I will say, when we're designing new subdivisions, new residential subdivisions, the number that we're using is about 100 GPD. So, the data that we're, we have right here, based off of actual pump data, is on the higher end of that. So I suspect that this is a, also a conservative, a number, I don't think it's lacking in the flow that's, that is seen.
Caleb, as you, as you referenced that line item, how are the undeveloped lots factored in, at that point? Is the 89,158 just on the existing residences?
Correct.
Okay.
So then, right below it, we have the 5.4 acres of undeveloped,
Yep.
um, which gives you to a population equivalent of 150, using textbook values. You get 30 gallons per person, that, that, a contribution from that, and it gives you right around 5,500 gallons per day for that area.
But you use a, you use 100, which is what you say.
Correct.
There's, I guess there's real world, real world data right there above it, that says it's 128.
Well, but, well, but the residences are going to be larger than the apartments, and have more fixtures.
Yep, never mind.
Yep.
So I guess, as I look at a 2022 GIS aerial on my iPad here, and I see between 12 and 15 undeveloped lots on 2022 now, I don't know what month, I don't, you know, this is not entirely exact. Let's say there, let's say there was a dozen that were unbuilt on at that time. Is it as simple as adding the 128 times 12 new units if they were on board today? I mean, to factor that in above the 89,158? Am I doing my math slightly incorrect as a planner?
You could do that, yes.
Okay.
So that's 1,500 gallons, that in addition. Again, so I-
Which could cut into that, the surplus of 8,000 theoretically, and reduce that to, let's say, 6,000 or thereabouts, okay?
Gary, would you come up and explain? Maybe answer Matt's question?
Yeah, I think I can- Gary Demble, 545 South 249th Circle, Chairman of the SID at West Shores. The problem we have out there is we don't have flow meters. We don't have flows, meters to tell us exactly what the flow is. So how do you determine what you have for flow? The best thing we could do is go back to pump runtime. And the pump runtime is actually the average runtime for a month, is the only data we had. They said, well, the pumps pump about 420 gallons per minute. So you take the pump runtime times the gallons per minute, but again, that's an average, not peak flows. But the problem is that our people that maintain our lift station did not always record the pump runtimes. So the best data we had was back in October 2022. And Mark's very right in that there were not lots all developed by that time. And so it is, at best, I'll guess at what the flows were. But it's not perfect, and, but we just don't have the data to support it, so we had to go with what we had. So, does that kind of clear that up?
Yeah.
That's-
Thanks, Gary.
That's why we had to do it.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing, I haven't done that, so I'm going to close the public hearing. Are there any other questions, anybody has? Okay, Eric?
Yeah, I don't necessarily have a, a lot to add, I mean, especially, aside from the unique sewer situation in Omaha's ETJ, which we've talked about back in April, and of course, today in the pre-meeting extensively. Yeah, it's unique that we have a site that is part of Omaha's zoning and plating jurisdiction, and, and has been for over 15 years since the annexation of the city of Elkhorn. You know, but then you have the sewer serviced by another governmental entity. So, we have Public Works, Omaha Public Works recommendation, and stated as a condition that Jim had mentioned during his initial presentation. Basically, you know, that doesn't necessarily touch on the inter-local agreement. I acknowledge, you know, that there is this agreement between the SID and, and the Village of Waterloo, that dates back some time. But our specific condition is ensuring that there is capacity and sewer capability if these buildings were to open, to make sure that the engineer, you know, has verified that with the Village of Waterloo. So, that is what we feel is appropriate. Obviously, we don't want to have a situation where buildings are constructed that cannot be sewered. That is not in anyone's best interest, of course. So, aside from that, you know, we have platted lots. We have previously commercial zoning that was, would have undergone a zoning conversion to the most similar commercial zoning district when this became part of Omaha's jurisdiction. And then obviously, you know, there, there are changes with that. We don't have exact matchup, of course, with other governmental, you know, zoning regulations as compared to ours. We try to match them up the best that we can, but there are definitely differences. So, you know, I guess from the city's perspective, it's fairly straightforward from, from zoning and plating, and that's where we have our recommendation for approval, obviously. So I don't know if you want me to read that, or if you have further, of course, you can have conversations and, you know, commentary as long as you see fit. But staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit to allow multifamily residential in the CC district, subject to the eight conditions in the recommendation report.
Any comments, questions? Matt, you get satisfied to answer to your question, sort of?
Put, I think it's on, you can put conditions on an action.
On a motion.
And if, I don't know if it's unconventional, a condition, I don't know how this would work, I'm just kind of talking out loud here, a condition that if data and analysis shows that you are going over that number, that the conditional use approval is voided. Is that possible?
Are you, you're referencing the, the limit in the inter-local agreement that the city of Omaha is not a party to?
Oh yeah, I am, yeah.
So, I would say, no, that would not be appropriate. That is not, while it's important information, the inter-local agreement and those numbers that are established, our recommendation report is looking at the increased capacity of the Village of Waterloo, if that's what's necessary through their efforts. Public Works wants to ensure, with the commentary and the language in condition number one, that that is being met before the occupation of either building. Jennifer, do you, you look like you want to chime in? No, I'm sorry.
I mean, if they build, I was going to say, if, if a new plant is built, it sounds like it needs to be, people will have to pay for that.
Yeah.
You know, so rates will go up regardless if this lot sits vacant or not, if they're building a new plant, in some way, shape, or form. That's probably-
Well, we're having to pay for the MUD, the new sewer, the sewer-
Exactly, exactly, that's, that's the point.
Our rates went up tremendously, yeah.
I guess my, my concern is that, that the remaining lots, there's five acres more of lots that are available. And if, and if all this capacity is absorbed before those are even contemplated, I don't, I don't know that that's wise either. Because then, I don't, from the developers, from an owner's standpoint, then, what do you have with a lot that's left over? That, that really you can't put anything but up till?
You know, I mentioned it back in April in the public testimony, and I'm not, I'm not trying to raise anybody's taxes or fees or anything, but when I do look at the assessment of the SID, it is the lowest tax levy I've ever seen for a neighborhood. So I, I'm not saying that, you know, the SID should have to pay more, it's just, it's just a comment.
What's that? Yeah, Frank.
I'm just jealous, I wish my levy was that high.
Any other comments?
Kind of get this out there, that the intent to build, you know, per what was shown was not this. And that, the Douglas County zoning would not have allowed this. But there could be actions taken, if this was Douglas County, they could be going through this right now with Douglas County plan. And that something can get built here, right now, under the commercial, the community commercial zoning, that needs no action of anybody.
Right.
So something will develop there. Right? I mean, that's, yeah.
Yes. So, I was doing a little bit of research when testimony was going on, and I am not an expert on Douglas County zoning, but I believe their zoning regulations were changed back in 2023. So I don't know what it was prior to that, if there was a substantial change, but it looks like they basically have one main commercial zoning right now, mixed use, and they have three different versions of that. Multifamily is in allowed use now in mixed use, but I don't know at the time what this was zoned. I do have a recommendation report that it was Douglas County GC zoning. This old recommendation report is when it, probably from 2007, one of the replats that was done under the city of Omaha. So it's, I mean, they've obviously had changes, so, and I, I can't speak for what it allowed at that time, but.
Okay. Good dialogue, appreciate everybody's input, everybody's input, appreciate it very much. I'd entertain a motion at this point, we have a recommendation.
I'll go ahead and motion the approval of conditional use permit to allow multiple, multiple family residential in the CC district, subject to the following eight conditions in the report.
All right, thank you, we have a motion in a second. Kathy, will you please record the vote?
Morris?
Yes.
Rosacker?
No.
Tondal?
No.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
No.
Rupert? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, point three?
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you for coming out, appreciate it. Next, we'll move into the regular agenda part. Next is item 10, I believe, if I'm following this right. It's KC 325 183, the applicant is Planning Department on behalf of the city of Omaha. The request is approval of the Ames Industrial Park TIF redevelopment project plan. The location is 3828 Ames Avenue. Don?
Uh, yeah, good afternoon, Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning. This project involves a vacant building on the northeast corner of 39th Street and Ames. The existing building, vacant and unused, will undergo a comprehensive rehabilitation to become commercial space. Most of that space will be used for vehicle maintenance, repair, and storage, or to service Spencer Management. Spencer Management is the developer's construction company. And that developer is Ames Industrial Park LLC, managed by Justin Moore. Total investment here along Ames and North Omaha is $845,000 in this project. The TIF support requested is $90,000. And be a great improvement to the product, property, and we ask for your approval.
Thank you, Don. Eric? Oh yeah. Any, any proponents? Any opponents? I think I'll close the public hearing, Eric.
Yeah, the only thing I'll have, I'll add, I'll coordinate with staff. Public Works wants to ensure that the access to Ames Avenue is, is removed. I know one of the site plan does show that, so we'll coordinate that on the, the TIF language as it proceeds through city council. Otherwise, staff recommends approval.
Okay, good. Okay, we have a recommendation, do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion in a second, Kathy, please record the vote.
Rosacker?
Yeah.
Tondal?
Sotolongo?
Yeah.
Moore? Rupert? Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, sound of zero?
Okay, thank you, all right. Next, I'm going to kind of change the order here a little bit, and just, since we're going to take several, several of the next ones together, I'm going to just ask for item number 13 to be next, and that's KC 325 186. The applicant is Planning Department on behalf of the city of Omaha. The request is approval of the Q Metro TIF redevelopment plan, which is southeast of 29th and Q Street.
Yeah, Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning, once again. This project on the south side of Q Street, right across from Metro Community College and the South Omaha Transit Center. The site is comprised of five lots, which are mostly vacant. There's one metal pole barn shed, uh, structure on the property, which will be removed. And a five-story mixed-use building will be constructed with 72 market-rate apartment units on the upper four levels, and about 18,800 square feet of first-floor commercial retail uses for the lower level. This is in an extremely blighted area, so it's a 20-year TIF term. The developer is Midwest Maintenance Realty, managed by Jamie Gutierrez. Total investment in the neighborhood is about $25.1 million. The TIF support for the project is $2,618,241. The project's been approved by the TIF committee, it meets the criteria-
of the applicant. As always, Don did a great job, and we appreciate Don has worked with us a lot through this TIF application. Just one more picture here. The others are massing diagrams, so they might look a little, yeah, not, not many windows. This is a better representation, and, and of course, the design will progress. I don't want to belabor it, you've already been here a while this afternoon, but one thing that I think is, is worth noting about this project is that 29th and Q, that's an area that's seen a lot of disinvestment over the years. There's a lot going on, a lot going on to the south of there with the redevelopment of South Side Terrace, all the work that Canopy South is doing in the neighborhood. One, I think, the great things about this project from a community standpoint is it starts to connect that development south of Q to that major commercial corridor on Q Street, to Metro Community College, and, and on through to the north, even, even to L Street. So it, it starts to connect the neighborhood and provide a really valuable asset for the community, residential units, commercial space, but not just for the people who will live there and work there, but I, I just, I think this location, it starts to build some momentum right there on Q Street, that can build off that development nearby to the south. And I think that's valuable, and will prove valuable over the next few years, as hopefully this catalyzes more development. Other point I want to make, a decent chunk of the TIF requested will go for public improvements. We went to TIF Committee, and they said, you got some room left, can we do some more public improvements along the street? And we said, that, that's great. And so we've been working for the last couple of weeks on exactly what those are, that might change a little bit between now and city council, but I think there'll be some real benefits to the aesthetics and functionality and pedestrian experience on Q Street, thanks to this project as well. So truly a good use, and the right use of TIF.
So is, is the current TIF amount, the correct amount then?
That is the correct amount, yep. The two point, 2618 is the final correct amount, yep.
Great. Thank you, David.
And that's it, I'm happy to answer any questions.
David, real quick, is there, maybe I shouldn't know this item, is there a timeliness of when the state grant has to, or when the project has to be finished, or are there any?
There, no.
Okay.
Yep, we're, if there is, we're well within that time, but we're not, there's no threat of that expiring soon. That's there for the project, and valuable piece of this. Thank you.
Thanks, David. Okay, any opponents? Okay, so now I'll close the public hearing. Eric?
Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Second.
A motion in a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Moore?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Tondal?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. Next, I'm gonna take items 11, 12, 14, 15, 16, and 19 together. The first two are TIF projects, and the last four are development projects. So we'll start with number 11, which is KC 325-184, the applicant is Planning Department on behalf of the city of Omaha. The request is approval of the Little Bow Historic TIF Redevelopment Project Plan. Location is northwest of 13th and William Streets. Next is item 12, KC 325-185, applicant is Planning Department on behalf of the city of Omaha. The request is approval of the Little Bow Village TIF Redevelopment Project Plan. Location, north of 14th and William Streets, and northeast of 12th and William Streets. Next is item 14, which is KC 1025-174, C12-25-175, the applicant is TH McClellan Holdings LLC. Request is preliminary and final plat approval of Old Town Villagree Plat 1, a minor plat inside city limits with rezoning from GI to NBD. Location is north of 14th and William Streets. Next is item 15, KC 1025-176, C12-25-177, the applicant is TH McClellan Holdings LLC. Request is preliminary and final plat approval of Zilada Husa Plat, a minor plat inside city limits with rezoning from GI to NBD. A portion of property is located within the ACI area of Civic Importance Overlay District. Location is northwest of 13th and William Streets. Next is item 16, KC 1225-179, applicant TH McClellan Holdings LLC, request is preliminary and final plat approval of Greco Plat, a minor plat inside city limits, location northeast of 12th and William Streets. And finally, item number 19, KC 1125-178, applicant TH McClellan Holdings LLC, request is approval of a PUR Planned Unit Redevelopment Overlay District, northeast of 12th and William Streets. So item number 11 first, Don, please.
Good afternoon, Tom McClellan, 1323 South 12th Street here in Omaha.
Thank you.
On behalf of all of these entities, the good news is none of these are on West Shores Lake. So we, we're starting off on a good spot. The, this is, from our standpoint, this is, in some ways, one big project. However, there's two different TIF applications, which I know Don will also speak about, because we're doing a historic tax credit piece, a Little Bohemia HDC, stands for Historic Tax Credit. So the financing structure is different for that, so it, it begets a separate TIF application versus the Little Bow Village, which is all new construction, development. Kind of an overview here, then the other element is, is, and this is a whole, the number of these are not contiguous, so therefore, we have multiple plats. And I would say that, to our credit, they're not contiguous. It might make it a little more complicated in some of these parts, but the reason they're not contiguous is because of our overarching vision for the neighborhood, which is to try to interweave these new construction and save the historic fabric of the neighborhood. Little Bohemia, 13th and William is where it's centered, is some of the very oldest structures in the city of Omaha. The structures we'll be talking about here date from the 1880s to about 1910, which is, obviously, you know, from the very inception of our city, you know, the mid 1800s or so. So we've made a great effort to try to retain as much as we can, that makes sense to retain. A few years back, I did get a National Historic Tax Credit District put in place. We hired a great gal out of Lincoln, historian, who came in, put a very expansive history of Little Bohemia together, that the State Historic Preservation Office, as well as the National Park Service, both approved of, to create the Little Bohemia Historic Tax Credit District, which then makes the, some of the buildings here that we're talking about eligible for historic tax credits. The, so that's kind of the bigger theme, like I said, it's one big project to us, but it has a whole lot of smaller parts, but you all get to get into the granular minutia because of the, the series of different plats. The, I'll start with the Historic Tax Credit piece of it. So there's, there's four different buildings that are eligible for Historic Tax Credits we're gonna utilize. 1256 South 11th, I'm sorry, South 13th Street here, as well as 1270 South 13th Street. This was the famous Donut Stop Restaurant for many decades, that had a very unique and colorful clientele through the years. 1270 was the Zilada Husa Restaurant, which is Golden Goose in Czech, hence the name of the, the plat. That became the Postal Workers Union Building for several decades, prior to us acquiring it. Around the corner there on William Street are two different buildings, I often refer to them as the 1880s buildings. They were both, one was built in 1880, the other was built in 1884. Very, very old buildings, you, you, they have kind of the false front facade that you would see in old west towns. Both of those, you know, hearken back to when this area of Omaha was an old west town. We have tried to kind of bring a little bit of that motif into the design as well. Those four comprise the Little Bohemia Historic Tax Credit, TIF application. Additionally, then, we've been trying to save and retain four houses along 14th Street that are all built from 1890 to 1900. Those are actually not part of this application, those are for future development. And then interweave the new construction pieces throughout. That includes a 21, a 20-unit, what we call a slip-in building, which is three stories here, a corner building, a two-story building, which is a commercial and apartments, a row, what we call a rowhouse piece of it, and then a larger five-story podium building. The nature of Little Bohemia has always been a little bit diminutive, in contrast to a Blackstone District, where I've done quite a bit of work through the years. Things, buildings are lower, one story, two stories, maybe three stories. So we, we've taken great care to not try and overwhelm the neighborhood and overwhelm the character of it with bigger buildings, but we do need some density. The city needs density, the city needs some more housing units, some more apartments. These are very, very proximate to downtown, we're just a few blocks south of Leavenworth Street here. So we have that ability to provide housing central, you know, right in our, our urban core, right next to our downtown area. Though it's kind of the, then the final element of it is a, what we've been describing as a Little Bohemia Country Club, across the street, where we would, the apartments that we're doing here, it's a total of 154 apartments throughout these. As you see in the suburbs, which is what we do compete with to a certain extent, if you have a large apartment project, you have a swimming pool. We are envisioning putting a swimming pool then here, that would be accessible, and having some inner, some entertainment, some commercial space along with that, for our apartment residents, and potentially even for, for others. These are mixed-use projects. The, the corner building here is a ground-floor commercial, we do have a second-floor commercial space. The historic buildings would anticipate being, coming, coming back as, as bars and restaurants, but would be our anticipation. There, I do have some renderings to give you a little bit idea of where we are and what we're talking about.
Mark, can I ask you real quick there, Don, going way out that other?
Yeah.
Do you own those, those two houses that aren't part of the project?
The, there's four, and I do own those, yes.
You do own those?
Yes.
Okay, why aren't those part of?
They're not part of it yet. It'll take us, construction is taking a lot longer than it used to, even five years ago, the, the protracting. So we're not gonna start on these until we're well into construction on this. These won't take that long to refurbish and rehab, so we will be back here, eight months, 10 months down the road, asking you all to take a look at what we envisioned for those. But that's, that's the reason why, is it's just not quite ready to do it, because we're gonna have quite a bit of time before we get there.
Is, is all of this gonna be done together, or is it phased in over time?
All of this will be done together. This podium building, what we refer to it as, which is ground-floor parking, as well as, is then four floors of apartments above it. It takes a lot longer to build than the other buildings. So that will, it, it's all gonna start at once, our anticipation and goal is to start this fall, depending on whether we can get your approvals. We are in a tight timeline, weather, other reasons as well, to push deals along, you need to push as hard and as fast as you can, as I'm sure all of you in the, the real estate world know. So we would like to start everything in the fall, they will, it'll, the, the podium building will be slower, though.
Sure, okay.
This is a, a view from 13th and William Street. This is the, the Golden Goose, the Zilada Husa. This is part of the Historic Tax Credit project, the, the Donut Stop would be right in here as well. I meant to mention our team, one-by-two architecture, Matt Smith and Bruce Yoder are here as well. They already slipped in the, the future Mutual of Omaha Tower, which is on 14th Street.
Where's the crane?
That's right. I don't think the, the program, the software is quite that adept. This would, this is that view from the corner. As I said, we, we've tried to really interweave, there's a really nice street wall that still exists historically along 13th Street there, along the west side of 13th Street. The east side of 13th Street, a lot of that has been demolished through the years, where I think there's kind of a scrapyard over there now. That, this would be an addition, for an outdoor patio, and a small addition to the historic piece, the, these, the Zilada Husa, or the Golden Goose. There are three apartments anticipated above there. This would be then the slip-in building that I described, which is taking a little bit of a theme from a hotel in Ouray, Colorado, is actually what it's looking at, that is apartments. Then the, the next piece is a small, it's currently an art studio, and presently, and will continue to be. These are the two 1880s buildings here, and then the corner building. This is a, a quick view now, we're flipping to 14th and William Street, viewing to the north, so we were on 13th here, effectively, and now we're flipping around to 14th. We tried to make quite a bit of an effort to, to make a creative use, to make the street wall on 14th Street, or the street experience feel appropriate, while still keeping those houses that were built in the 1890s. And, but still being able to have some density, have some movement, have some different heights, and, and different peaks along the way. Then, this is then flipping over and looking from 14th, I'm looking north, I'm sorry, south on 14th Street. These are the four that, what I would said, we will be coming back at some point later on to, to ask for a TIF or redevelopment of those as well. We do have some second-floor commercial, we worked with the folks at Public Works to identify the right location for the parking entrance, and the ground floor is all a parking garage, as well as the apartments. I'm really proud of this project, the way it's come around, we spent a lot of time trying to figure out how to really blend into this neighborhood. Little Bohemia has had a little bit of development happening, we completed 107 apartments a couple of years ago, they've been very successful, we're pushing up to 100% occupancy on them. But there is still a lot of holes in Little Bohemia for development, and the opportunity to bring, you know, really high-quality housing, just a few blocks from downtown, keep and retain some of these little kernels of historic texture and fabric that our city has, and not overwhelm the neighborhood at the same time, was, was our desire, and I think we've done it, with the, our team, the architects, and our engineers and the like, working on this. I will conclude, there is then another missing middle piece that we have talked about that is part of this application. That is at 12th and William, which, sorry, is, the cutout here reflects this, at 12th and William. So this is actually two buildings, one dates from 1890, the one here in the corner, 1323, and 1319 dates from right around 1900. Again, this is the deep history of our city of Omaha. In addition to wanting to save these two structures, even they're, they're not grandiose structures, they're rather diminutive, but they do still have that character and, and the true history of our city, we looked at an opportunity to do what we've been calling Missing Middle, which a lot of you probably are familiar with the phrase, those of you aren't, and I really wasn't until recently, is the concept that, that a lot of urban planners across the country have been talking about the last few years. We have a lot of single-family homes, we have a lot of 100-unit apartment buildings, including what I'm talking about doing right here. We don't have things in the middle. We don't have six-unit buildings, 10-unit buildings, 18-unit buildings. This is, this is attempting to meet that demand, to meet that market. And it, it's part of the application that you'll see here. This is the concept that we've been working on, this is 10 units. One of the things we found on the, our project on 12th and William Street, which is directly across the street from this, is the opportunity for folks to actually enter their apartment from the open air. We, myself, other developers in town, have built a lot of double-loaded corridors. You know, the apartment buildings you see, it's a one hallway down the middle, and there's apartments on both sides. It's efficient, there's a reason we all build that, it's an efficient way to build. But there is a little bit of a sterility that goes along with that. We did some units across the street from here, that you actually open the door into the unit, and into the open air. It's a very desirable quality, we have a waitlist for those units. That's part of the Missing Middle concept, is you're, you're an approachable building, it's a little bit more in character. We, the, the, I've been working with the city, sorry about that. We, the, I've been working with the city, sorry about that, probably someone calling to tell me to stop talking so long.
Oh, you got my text.
Thanks, Jen, thanks, I got your text. So, we've been, I've been working with the city back and forth, this is being shown, we received, on Monday, we received a report from City Planning saying that this was being deemed to be laid over. I would request we don't lay it over. We just received that word Monday. We have worked, I think, feverishly, our architects, our civil engineering team, feverishly to work with the city planning and Public Works. I will, I will say, want to say, Mr. England, Mr. Carter, Mr. Haas, and Mr. Lotus and Public Works have been really great and professional, working with us the last few days, to try to see if we could get their questions answered and concerns. I do believe we have answered all of them, even as recent as this morning. Our civil engineers did put a little bit more in the plan that wanted to be seen by Mr. England. Mr. Lotus with Public Works indicated, some of the questions they had on the on-street parking were answered adequately and sufficiently. So, again, I would request that we do not lay it over, as I think one of the previous gentlemen here had indicated, a month delay is very punitive for a project. This is part of the overall project, it is a smaller piece of it, but it is still part of it that enables us to keep the flow and keep things working. Certainly, there can be conditions on that approval, as there almost always are, in any of the conditions you all provide. So, we would respectfully ask, appreciate if it can happen, again, appreciate all the work that Eric and all the others were working with us the last few days, we would certainly like to see if we can have an approval on that one as well. I think that's about all I have to say.
I must have missed it, where's the Bohemian Cafe going to be?
The Bohemian Cafe does not exist any longer.
No.
It closed, oh, about seven or eight years ago, it's been converted to a little restaurant called Fizzy's, which is a fun little place, if you ever have a chance.
Wait, you could only bring that back.
Yeah.
That was great. Just joking. Any questions for Mark?
Thanks.
Okay. All right, any other proponents wish to speak on this at all? Don?
Don Seaton, City Planning, Tom's pretty much covered most everything I have in my presentation. I just kind of recap in terms of the two TIF applications. The Little Bow Historic TIF Project is one item, one TIF project, one vote. That project includes a total of twenty-four thousand seven hundred square feet of commercial retail uses, and three or four commercial bays, and five market-rate apartment units. And the investment in the neighborhood is about six-point-two million dollars for the historic TIF, and the TIF support is eight-hundred-sixty-eight thousand nine-hundred-fifty dollars. Now, the other project, the Little Bow Village TIF Project, a few more sites, there's roughly about five sites, it's a large mixed-use project with multiple buildings. In total, there'll be a hundred-and-fifty-five market-rate apartment units, that includes a rehab, single-family home, a tenplex, an eightplex, a mixed-use building with two units, a twenty-unit apartment building, that they call the slip-in, and then, the large mixed-use building, the podium with a hundred-and-fourteen units. And this project also includes the recreational commercial building, that has pickleball courts and a swimming pool, and rooftop patio bar, that they're referring to as a Little Bow Country Club. And the Little Bow Village Project is a total investment in the neighborhood of about thirty-four-point-three million dollars. The TIF support requested is seven million three-hundred-twenty-three thousand and ninety dollars in TIF support. And both of these are good projects for the neighborhood, and we ask for your approval.
Okay. Thank you, Don. Any other proponents? Any opponents that wish to speak to this? If you have none, I'll close the public hearing. So, we'll take these one by one, I think, Eric.
Yeah, I guess, I don't, you know, I don't have anything to add, of course, to the two TIF cases, those are on for recommend for approval, as well as the two Platts on the west side of Thirteenth Street, we have a recommendation for approval. Obviously, we talked about it in the pre-meeting, and Tom mentioned it, the northeast of Twelfth and William, so there's a Platte, and then, there's a P.U.R. The other sites to the west of Thirteenth Street, those have rezonings to MBD, so those don't have specific P.U.R.s. You know, the P.U.R. does make it a little bit more challenging, because you do have detailed plans, so that's kind of the difference. The mixed-use boundary on the west side of Thirteenth Street is more expansive over to Fourteenth Street, so that's why we're able to support that MBD. And Tom's asked probably in the past about, you know, MBD on the Twelfth and William, unfortunately, we can't support that, but, you know, obviously, we're supportive of the P.U.R. You know, there's been a lot of conversations, and, you know, I appreciate working with Tom and trying to get there, probably took on too much and too many renderings, and, you know, it's hard to juggle all that after we get to pack it out and doing our other duties, and, but, obviously, trying to be helpful and accommodating. From the city's perspective, I'm hopeful that we're there, we're just not able to recommend approval at this time, there's just some of those finer details that we feel still need to be vetted out, where's the property line location, you know, there are some renderings, and I went through quite a bit of those in the pre-meeting. So, you know, we don't like to delay projects, trust me, I'll be the first one to say, we like to get projects approved and keep them moving, but with the specific Twelfth and William, we feel just a one-month layover is appropriate, just so that we can continue to vet. It started out, there was concerns, obviously, your packet has the comment that there's not enough space to support the diagonal parking, which could have had a large impact in meeting that one-to-one parking requirement that the infill guidelines in the P.U.R. that we've supported in projects throughout, you know, with all infill projects that we've done. And, you know, the applicant was a little taken aback, accommodating one stall for those existing residents as well, so, you know, I appreciate the effort that the team has put forward, and, you know, we're the first ones to say it, we need more, like Tom said, Missing Middle and, you know, Housing Vault type. So, we are excited, I hope it all fits, but, with that being said, we, the city is still standing on the recommendation layover. Excuse me, I don't, I don't believe it's going to cause delay, of course, the applicant, you know, has financial considerations and timelines that they have to factor in, but there's a lot still with the TIF and getting those to council with the plan and the agreement, as well as subdivision agreements for the Platts, if those are applicable. So, I guess that's where we stand. Can I answer any questions? We will take six different motions and votes, so we'll go one by one, but I don't know if you want any further conversation or have questions.
Does anyone have any questions at all? I would only say, Tom, I love what you're doing with this, this is great, I mean, it's nice to see, you know, the historic area kind of redeveloped like this, and the challenges that go along with that, but I love what you're doing with this.
Thank you. And Matt and Bruce here deserve a lot of credit, I mean, they've spent, we've spent a lot of time together.
Yeah, I bet you have.
Going through very, very detailed, I mean, you know, at some point in time, we were really inch by inch on this project, because we do things neat, there's some other elements that I won't go in, kind of neat things that I think will be a part of this, but it'll all roll out, hopefully.
Yeah, very nice, I'm glad you're doing it, thank you.
We have to look up which addresses and houses that my great-grandfather did, did one somewhere right in the Fourteenth and William area.
Oh, wow.
So, I've got to figure it out.
That's great. It's a neat area, I mean, there's still quite, that Fourteenth Street has still, got a lot of little homes still intact through their history, it's neat.
That's great to see. Okay, anything else? If not, let's go ahead and then take these in order, then, you need recommendations.
Yep, yep, no, so, the first agenda item is the Little Bow Historic TIF, so number eleven, staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you, Eric, and we have a motion.
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, thank you, we have a motion, a second, Kathy, please record the vote.
Tondel?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Roseacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
For agenda item twelve, this is the Little Bow Village TIF, staff recommends approval.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Second.
Thank you, Kathy, please record the vote.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Roseacker?
Yes.
Tondel?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Thank you. Kathy, please record the vote.
Morris?
Yes.
Roseacker?
Yes.
Tondel?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Thank you. Thank you. Kathy, please record the vote.
Morris?
Yes.
Roseacker?
Yes.
Tondel?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Okay.
So, agenda item fifteen is the Zlatahusa Platte, so I have to admit, as a staff, we had to, we had to Google that after, after the deadline day, we weren't as familiar with the interpretation, I think Kathy helped look that one up and found some info. Staff recommends approval of rezoning from G.I. to MBD, approval of the preliminary Platte subject to nine conditions in the report, and approval of the final Platte subject to submit of an acceptable final subdivision agreement if necessary prior to council.
Thank you, do we have a motion?
Approval of the rezoning from G.I. to MBD, approval of the preliminary Platte subject to the nine conditions in the staff report, and approval of the final Platte subject to the conditions of preliminary Platte approval, and submit of an acceptable final subdivision agreement if necessary prior according to council.
Thank you. Thank you. Kathy, please record the vote.
Morris?
Yes.
Roseacker?
Yes.
Tondel?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Agenda sixteen, so this is the final Platte, this is for the northeast of Twelfth and William, there's no rezoning accompanied with this, obviously, we briefly discussed these two items for the layover, so staff recommends layover.
Okay, thank you, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, Kathy, please record the vote.
Roseacker?
Yes.
Tondel?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Roseacker?
Yes.
Tondel?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Thank you. Kathy, please record the vote.
Tondel?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Roseacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Good luck, great job, guys.
Thank you.
It's me, a hot commodity.
Yeah.
They had t-shirts from, from Tortino's Pizza. All right, next, we need a motion to approve the minutes from the June fourth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting, both pre-meeting and regular meeting. Thank you, we have a motion, a second, Kathy, please record the vote.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Roseacker?
Yes.
Tondel?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved.
Any motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
And a second, I think, too. Thank you.
Moore?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Roseacker?
Yes.
Tondel?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.